Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special City Council meeting for August 7th. It is 7:10. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Roman.
Present.
Councilmember Soto.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Monan.
Present.
Motion approved. Sorry. For the record, all council members, mayor, and mayor pro tem are in attendance.
Thank you. Can we all please stand for a moment of silence, for a pledge of allegiance, and then for a moment of silence, please?
Ready, begin. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Can we all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members? Thank you. All right, thank you. Counsel, is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, citizen comments. Our special meeting members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter on the agenda may do so at this time. Note, under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment on the phone to any items not on the agenda? Actually, on the agenda. Coming back into the chamber, any citizen comments? Seeing none. Moving forward. So, we have one discussion and potential action item. Appointment of the city clerk. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, mayor and counsel. So, this item is a continuation of last week's conversation related to the appointment or the vacancy in the city clerk's office. The previous city clerk, Lethicia Vasca Surita, was elected to a four-year term for the city of Livingston. She submitted her letter of resignation as a city clerk effective June 8, 2023. As a result, that position has been vacant. We initially received council direction to have a schedule of potential appointment for that position. We opened up the application period. Nobody applied for the position during that time. We provided this update to the council last week. At last Tuesday night's council meeting, the council directed us to allow for additional individuals to submit their name for potential appointment to be considered by the council. We did receive one name, one applicant, which we have included in the backup. And so, tonight, the council's options are to select a member to appoint to the city clerk role. The council can choose to have a special election, or three, the council can choose to provide alternative direction on this item, mayor. With that, that concludes the background on this item, mayor. Thank you.
Legal, I just want to double-check to see if you're on the line.
Yes, this is Shannon Chapman, Assistant City Attorney. I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we do. Thank you for that. All right, so we have, in addition to, so, Legal, we did have another person interested in the position. So, is there anything you want to add in regards to, so, we have one application officially included, attached to the agenda, and we have one additional person that was interested to participate in the process. Can you provide some legal opinion in regards to this?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The city council has the authority to appoint anyone that is a registered voter in the city, whether or not they have submitted an application or not. So, this evening, you could either name the applicant as the city clerk when the application has been received, or if another person were to express interest or even stand up in the audience and say, "I'm interested right now," the city council has the authority to appoint that person as city clerk as well. There is no additional procedure that you need to do in order to do that.
All right, thank you. So, that additional person interested in the position is Musio Vera. Musio Vera is a resident of Livingston for many years, and three years ago, he was also a candidate for city council. So, he is registered, and he is a resident of the city of Livingston. So, we do have two candidates, Ms. Candace Aguilar and Musio Vera. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, is Musio going to be here tonight?
I believe he's not going to be able to make it in person.
Thank you.
I have a question. So, I just heard Legal say that they didn't have to apply, but that was one of the conditions that we, as a council, had put forth a couple weeks ago. We were going to go through an application process. That's what was discussed, and that is what we moved forward with, was an application process.
Councilmember Soto, if I may?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. May I address that question? So, the question is, does the city council have to go through a process if they've elected to go through the process? Yes, the city council can choose to go through a process to select a candidate. However, a majority of the city council can choose to disregard that process at any time if they feel like they've already gone through it or it's no longer applicable. So, there's no legal requirement to do so, as long as the majority of council members decide what procedure they're going to do or if they're going to use a different sort of procedure.
I understood that, so thank you for the input. But, like I said, this council, before we adjourned, had agreed upon an application process. This council. We did not leave saying, "You don't have to apply." We said, "Have that information into City Hall as soon as possible so that it can be reviewed." So, that's what I'm saying, is that this council, at the time of the selection process, said to go through an application process.
If, just for clarification, if I remember correctly, the application process was requested for the first step of the process, which declared the Thursday, 24th, as the filing deadline. At that time, the city did not receive any applicants or any applications. Then, at last Tuesday's meeting, this council decided to just provide an opportunity to have interested persons to be confirmed that they were registered to vote and that they were residents of the city of Livingston. I don't recall, at that time, a requirement to go through the actual application process, but primarily was to confirm that any interested people would be registered to vote and residents of the city of Livingston. I don't believe we did include any application paper requirements as we did the first time, which the deadline was July 24th.
If you go back to the staff report on August 1, 2023, council gave direction to continue the appointment of city clerk to a special meeting on August 7, 2023, to allow interested residents to apply for the city clerk position.
Legal, are there any additional information, or is that pretty much the information that needs to be shared to the council, and then council can make a decision?
Just to be clear, that can be the council direction last time, and again, I just want to make clear, I'm not advocating for one process or another. But, from a purely legal perspective, the city council can appoint anyone tonight, whether or not they've received an application or not, as long as a majority of the city council agrees.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, so, should we consider adding this name with the majority of the council, and then the council can decide from those two names? Or is that not needed?
That's technically not needed. You could just nominate, make a motion to appoint a person, and if there's a second and a majority vote, that would sufficient.
Okay.
But, if the council would like to go through a two-step process, it could do that as well. There could be a motion to waive the application requirement, and then a second, and then there could be a vote on it, and then anybody could apply. Either way works.
Okay, so, we don't have to go through that motion according to Legal, but is the option of the council? Questions?
How was the city contacted?
How was the candidate?
Yeah.
The candidate advised his interest by phone call.
By phone call?
Yes.
Thank you. Then, okay, and you said, Mr., he's not going to be here tonight?
He's trying, but probably not going to be able to make it in one time.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, I'd like to hear from the candidate that is here. Is that okay with everybody while we, because I think we should consider everybody equally, but I'd do like to hear from the candidate now that's here right now.
Well, let me go out to public comment, and then I can.
Sure, sure, sure.
And then, before we bring you back to the dais. So, at this time, I'm going out for public comment in regards to this item. Is there any public comment on the phone? Going back to the chamber, any public comment in the chamber? Okay, so, at this time, I'm bringing it back to the dais, and at this time, I want to give an opportunity to Ms. Candace Aguilar, if you'd like to say something.
There's not much I want to say unless you guys want to ask me something.
First of all, I want to thank you for submitting it. Seems like you put a lot of information, you know, so thank you. We do appreciate that. You understand the duties and the responsibilities?
I do.
We had a difference of opinion, for lack of a better word, on what is the exact duties. What do you understand the duties to be?
To attend council meetings and document notes on what's delivered and what's talked about. about and what's going to be on the next agenda. And then, anything that's further than that will be instructed by you guys.
No, that's not actually correct. Just to... Once a person is appointed, we're not their bosses. They're in the independent office. That's what we understand. Nobody here, not the council, even as a majority vote, or the city manager, or anybody, can tell you what anybody what to do.
Yeah, well, you're working as a team.
Yeah, we work as a team, but we can't give direction.
Yeah.
Once the person's sworn in, they're the boss.
Yeah.
Okay? That's what you understand.
Yeah, well, you work as a team together.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We understand that, but I can't go to you and say, "Hey, I want you to top up a member..." You know, that doesn't work.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Okay, so you understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions? Anything else you might want to add, Ms. Aguilar?
What's that?
Anything else you want to add?
No. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your application. It was very thorough.
Well, thank you for going through the process and putting your interest in applying for this position.
Thank you.
I want to thank you as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, council, so this is back on the dais. How would you like to proceed? Is there... Are there any other questions, comments?
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Ms. Candace Aguilar to the city clerk position.
Okay, so we have a motion. Actually, before we move forward, Legal, if I remember correctly, just to clarify, if I remember from Roy, this process would require a supermajority or just a regular majority?
To the mayor, I believe it requires the majority of the city council. That would be three of the five.
So, would that be supermajority or majority? I think I remember, and I just wanted to verify that it was supermajority.
I believe it just the majority. Give me just a second, and I'll double check.
Yeah, let's just double check just to make sure, you know... Make sure that we go through the motions, and we do it right.
Yes. I don't see any requirement that it be a supermajority. It is just a majority.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, for clarification, this is the one item that does require supermajority is usually ordinances, resolutions, and they do not require a supermajority. I don't believe that, because ordinances are supermajority.
Okay. So, at this time, we should go by legal advice, which... Just to confirm, you know, he did say just regular majority, not supermajority, just for the record.
Is that correct? Just a regular majority.
All right, thank you. All right, council, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Motion denied.
All right.
With the lack of a second.
So, motion denied by a lack of a second. Is there any other motions? I'll go ahead and motion to have Musio Vera as appointed to city clerk, elected city clerk. So, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mayor Moran, and second by Mayor Protem Samra. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Ross.
Yes.
Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Soto.
No.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four, one.
Thank you. And that's the end of our agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I have to... Need to make a comment, please?
Yes, go ahead.
I know it's not on this. I know it's a special meeting, but I would... One of the things I would like to see at our next council meeting, if it's possible, is, as you know, we're going to be having to deal with a second firefighter, and there may be challenges with funding and so forth.
Yes.
I would like to bring forward, the next meeting, if it's possible, a direction from the council to form a subcommittee that can possibly... And I'm not saying, you know, look into maybe like a half-cent sales tax for safety, for fire, and see if there's... We can do research, because we still have time to get this to November. I know March is out of the question, I get it. But if we can explore the possibility, then, you know, I'd like to bring that up for discussion at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, anything else?
That's it.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I already know that... Anyways, in your conversation with Mr. Vera, is his commitment to Tuesday night meetings, is that a discussion that we should be having, what the duties that were questionable, that came up, that arose to the resignation of the previous?
Yes, duties and responsibilities.
Yes, I mean, it's unfortunate that he's not here to answer to the question, but I would like to know, is his commitment to the Tuesday nights to be here in council chambers? Because that was... That would have been my biggest question for that. No, we just all said yes? All except for me?
So, Legal, are we allowed to continue this conversation once we're close with the...
It's still the item.
Yes, it is still the item. It's up to the discretion of the city council to discuss it.
Okay. So, council, what do you guys want to do? Majority vote? You guys want to continue this conversation?
The appointment's been made. What's the... None of us can speak for somebody else.
Then how about speak your own opinion? How about let us know what it was that you prefer a hiring of a... Or the appointment of the clerk that you named? Without having a chance to look at an application, what they would be willing to provide, that kind of a discussion? You know, transparency and all.
So, the item has been voted on already, and has been made a decision, and there should have been feedback or questions while we were discussing the item before a vote was made.
Actually, there was no discussion on Musio, only that he wasn't going to be here, and he didn't put an application in. But you all said yes. What'd you say yes to? Yeah? Nobody want to say, you know, what the expectations are for Musio?
I believe those expectations have already been explained in more than once at this council.
Yeah, they don't have to be explained. We can see it, the four of you. Thank you.
All right. Meeting adjourned, 6:35.